Hello friends, it's Col Rain or Col Rain Tarot here on YouTube. My pronouns are they/them and I'm creating for you, for the collective who finds this beautiful healing session. As I just said, a healing session where we are going to bring in the frequency of Archangel Michael as well as Archangel Gabriel, who in my opinion represent the celestial energies of the sun and the moon. And we are going to harmonize these energies in order to evoke an energy shift within your soul, within your deeper spirit that resides in the body and then projects and manifests the aura. So I am going to be working in your aura today, shifting and influencing and making suggestions within that energy system in order to hopefully inspire a change that emerges from the inside outward. So, and it's funny that my camera shifted at that time, so something's definitely already beginning to happen, so. I am going to be including a little bit of an oracle reading throughout this, just to attune us consciously to the energy that's wanting to assist on that subconscious level. So, I'm gonna begin with this matchbox. And I want to invite you to begin to consider the energy that you've noticed within yourself, within your responses to your environment, within your own conscious desires. That you'd like to see shift? Or be supported? And this can be energy from however long ago you want. Whatever comes to mind? Or something very recent? Just moving that. I don't know if I can tap on this box really. Yeah, I don't think it's there. I guess it's okay. And we're gonna be lighting this candle. It's like a rosé recycled wine bottle candle. So we're gonna slide this open. I have a cute little yin yang in there. Okay, so we're gonna begin to light this and I'm gonna remove the cork from the top. And I'm gonna be placing this behind me, so. I would like to invite the guides of higher wisdom, the guides of compassionate and loving consciousness to come and assist with this reading, especially and particularly Archangel Michael and Archangel Gabriel, please. Thank you, thank you. And this candle is a white eucalyptus candle. I'm trying to think where I wanna place this that you might be able to see. So, I'll move over a little bit so it's visible. So, next, we're going to fill the space. And I want to invite you to bring in the breath into your lungs. Fill your chest and hold it and release. Bring in healing, healthy, nourishing energy and release. Do it one more time, please. And out. And I was using this energy from tapping to help to ground and connect. And I was visualizing your energy reaching down into the earth. Helping us to connect with the plants who are supporting this journey. The spirit of the plants, the spirit of the animals, the spirit of their relationships and their bonds. So, I'm gonna light this on the candle. Inviting the energy of those ascended masters, those higher spiritual guides to invoke their energy. This higher wisdom. Bringing that through your central channel. Opening up and activating your heart space, the field around your heart that influences the ebbs and flows, that connects and creates bonds, relationships at the soul level. Cleansing, protecting, clearing, uplifting, purifying. All the way up around the soul star that brings in and channels information. Just bringing in an extra special intention that these angelic guides that I have invoked can help to open and release any blockages to you accessing and developing your spiritual gifts and spiritual abilities in this lifetime. I'm just going to charge my hands up. Place them over your aura. Bring in this energy of divine love. Bringing it down to the lower energy centers so that you know that your psychic gifts come through your connection to the earth and not in spite of helping you to feel the grounded loving intention. Helping you to be able to make those connections through your physical reality that allow you to anchor and channel these higher energies. Because when we don't have that ability to ground and connect to that energy, our gifts are essentially empty on some level because they don't have a place to sit, to reside. We don't have that point of contrast. We don't have a deeper understanding of how things work or the ability to feel, to sense, to make those connections with others. Because essentially what intuition is, is making a connection between us and another spiritual being. Whether that's just channeling for ourselves or channeling for another human or even sometimes channeling in information for animals or younger people, like children that we're assisting, things like this. So, using the intuitive senses allows us to create, deepen and establish beautiful and loving spiritual connections. And most importantly, those connections to Source, to God, to the universal forces, however you wanna call it, Allah, the Tao, whatever. Whatever name it goes by or they go by. So, I'm gonna keep this jasmine burning right here. I don't know. I guess you can see the smoke rising. But working with those angelic guides, I have this little angel token. And this angel token says "I am blessed" on the back. And it is a ceramic token. This is a token that I am intending reaches you to channel in an activation of your gifts, of an awareness of your gifts on a conscious level. I'm gonna try and help it give you frequencies through the noise. But also I want to bring in an awareness of the various angelic forces that you can call upon. Pretty much any emotion, any experience, you can call upon an angel that relates to that experience. So like an angel of travel, an angel of writing, an angel of processing emotions. And these angels can go by different names. You can, you know, obviously seek out these specialists like Archangel Michael, Archangel Gabriel. Archangel Michael, I feel is wanting an introduction because the energy of this angel is very present in this moment. Archangel Michael is an angelic consciousness, an angelic force that is connected to the god of Abraham and the, has been revealed through those communities which encompass multiple religious practices through Christianity, Islam and Judaism, most importantly. And Archangel Michael is a force, I guess, a messenger for God because the first time the word angel appears in Hebrew texts, it comes as Malak or a messenger. And so, the messengers of this divine source, because regardless of if you work with that form of God, these angels go across religious and spiritual barriers. These angels don't operate on our human constructs. They operate in much higher dimensions. And Archangel Michael is a 13th dimensional being who is here to assist humanity in, by protecting us. Archangel Michael carries a mighty flaming sword. Archangel Michael to me is connected to the color blue, to our self-expression, to being able to speak words of wisdom, words of comfort, words of compassion, words that change consciousness and bring us to a deeper connection with our own human experience and the human experiences of those whose lives we touch every day. Archangel Michael is an amazing angel to invoke when we need support, when we need reassurance in a very tangible way. Yes. Archangel Gabriel, who's the other side of this token, bringing in a blessing. Archangel Gabriel also appears in Hebrew texts and is connected to all the Islamic, Abrahamic religions like Islam, Christianity and Judaism. But is celebrated and connected to many different people regardless of religious or cultural disposition. So, Archangel Gabriel brings in the sacred flame. Archangel Gabriel also connects us to the deeper realms of the subconscious and is a much more of a subtle energy. Archangel Gabriel operates in the same dimensional realms between 12th and 14th. And is the messenger of prophecy, of creative vision and of all those other lunar realms of facing fears, transmuting fears and answering a calling as well. Working with the deeper subconscious, so dream work is very important and connected to Archangel Gabriel. So yeah, I'm feeling like these two angels wanted to introduce themselves in order to, here, I'll show you this one last time. Sweep it over your aura. Over the ground, especially tapping in through the heart. But they wanted to introduce themselves to open the invitation that you can call on these angelic energies regardless of your beliefs. I am feeling like a good amount of you have a rocky history with religion. I just feel like that's one of my callings in this life is to reach out to those individuals who have that kind of relationship with religion. And so they really wanted to reveal themselves through this energy session and also just help you to feel what their energetic presence feels like. Yeah, so Archangel Michael actually is drawing me to first use this crystal but then begin to pull some oracle cards because Archangel Michael wants to remind you that this archangel's energy is much more conscious and aware, being connected to the sun. And this has to do with how we take care of ourselves and speak to ourselves especially. And so I'm gonna bring in this piece of like raw morganite. I actually found this and I believe my angels always bring me to certain things that I can use as spiritual tools. But Archangel Michael wants me to bring this through the heart space and just start drawing in some symbols. Love, channeling in these symbols of these higher realms, especially certain sacred geometric energies at this time to realign and harmonize the heart space into being able to emanate the energy that is desired at this time. And that's essentially what doing psychic work or having psychic abilities is, is being more in tune with the sacred energy that is channeled through the body and especially is channeled through the heart space. So, just bringing through an energy of clarity, of higher frequency, also being able to discern and block out any energy or frequencies that are seeking to distract you on this path or alter, alter the energy that is being brought through your sacred energetic field. And I'm so sorry if you hear my stomach. Whenever I channel energy, I definitely feel that my stomach moves and I just haven't eaten enough today. I will, I promise I'll take care of myself after this, but that's also part of what's happening, so. And the archangels, whenever I'm in contact with them, they always like do remind me how to, you know, care for myself in the most mundane ways and some aspects. And that's a really beautiful, especially Archangel Michael just feels like a good friend. So, they're wanting to bring this out really, really fast. And here is the card, the present. What a beautiful energy for Archangel Michael to bring through. Says "I fully experience every moment of my life by living in the present." For some of you, I am getting the indication that this has to do with you documenting certain aspects of your life, writing certain experiences down as you go through this integration process following this reading slash energy session. And I dare say it's an attunement as well to working with some of these guides who are going to protect you through this attunement to higher source energies. And in order to do that, we need to get really clear. And again, something that I was bringing up at the beginning of this session was grounding the energy. So do you see if this person is seated on a forest floor? They're very aware of the changes that are happening because there's this fall type setting. The light is able to reach them because they've slowed down, because they've sought out a connection to nature. And so for a lot of you too, something that's really important in coming through that I'm passionate about is having a proper relationship with the tools that we use. So, for me, I'm just gonna talk about this briefly, but where I live, the white sage is a native plant and it is horribly misused throughout the entire world at this point. It's just been globalized as a spiritual tool. And without that relationship to the plant, the energy isn't there. And so what I encourage, if you are somebody that does psychic spiritual work, consider where your materials are being sourced. And if you already do, beautiful. This is just a reminder that the energetic frequency of a tool comes in when we are, you know, asking the earth to assist us in our practices. And when we are the ones who are sourcing something and using it for our benefit. And it's also really important to consider the cultural history and cultural uses and who who brought forth our awareness of this tool. And to be able to honor the practices and the relationship that has been established between the other people and other beings, especially animal beings. So in particular for like the white sage, for example, there are certain animal beings whose relationship with, and even insect beings whose relationship with this plant is being harmed because of the way that it's being extracted from the earth. So that's just an example. But this present moment is saying that in each moment that we take, we are able to heal ourselves energetically. This is what Archangel Michael is really bringing forward to me at this moment. And Archangel Michael is also wanting me to bring up the ability to use humor, to heal, to be able to laugh and also to take time to just rest and pause. I feel like our moments kind of speed by sometimes when we're really busy and preoccupied. So Archangel Michael just wanting to remind us to slow down in order to accept change because this card is 23. 23 reduces to 5, which is a number of change and evolution. So if any of you are feeling stuck or confused about your awareness, because sometimes when we're between an initiation of certain consciousness realms or psychic abilities, it can feel like we are in a really confusing state of mind. So just getting grounded is gonna help with that. And Archangel Michael is really calling upon the root chakra. So I'm going to actually, it's interesting that even the crystal that was brought to my attention is this pink morganite. And pink is an alternative color for the heart chakra. So instead of using green, Archangel Michael wanted me to remind you that the heart is an anchor into this lifetime. So we need to do some root chakra work, which I will do in a moment and sacral as well. So, this is a fire elemental card and this is our second and last message from Archangel Michael. And it says "I ignite the fire within me that connects me to the divine." So, Archangel Michael is bringing me to a visualization that you can do. And I want you to imagine if there are any lower density energies that are coming from within you, from within your environment. I want you to imagine your relationship with those energies because you're gonna feel that chord. And usually you can find, sift through those chords and feel the one that feels fear-based. There may be multiple ones that feel fear-based. For some of you, I have a feeling this is coming from a school setting, if you do attend school. Or if you're in an environment where you're around a lot of people and you're taking on a lot of energies, especially if you've been activating your psychic abilities, you may be subconsciously pulling in and healing and transmitting some of those energies. But what you're doing is you're carrying them. So I want you to imagine that a beautiful intelligent flame emerges right in front of your heart space and it comes out of the heart. And imagine whatever this, whatever color this flame emerges as represents a certain part of your energetic system or your chakra points, those points of intelligence, points of consciousness that really wants to be purified and transmuted based on these energetic chords. You may have multiple flames in multiple colors emerge. And so what I want you to do is allow this flame to, again, it's an intelligent flame, to emerge and travel through those different parts and release, 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 release. And what that did, I was inviting Archangel Michael to come through and use that flaming sword to assist your divine intelligent flame, that pure spark of your soul to come through and allow for those relationships to shift and release that karmic tie. Or sometimes we have those feelings of obligation or confusion based on ego, things like this that keep us held or stuck to certain connections or vibrations or experiences. So I'm being called to shift over, oh, actually, jumping the gun a little bit. So I'm gonna use this little selenite wand. It's a peach selenite. So it has this kind of orangey cast. And this is the, I'm gonna use this to purify and open up for you to do some work on the root to develop new connections or further your connections and bonds to this earth realm to help you to find that like pure. And when I say pure, I keep using that word. I guess I don't have a better one. But those unobstructed, really natural, loving, beneficial, mutually beneficial connections that you've created with the earth and also being able to connect with your ability to interpret certain spiritual messages you receive from those connections. So just working down here in the root, helping you to find this lifetime as your anchor point for working on past lives, working on the collective consciousness, other dimensional experiences, if that's something that you have access to or resonate with. Whatever your spiritual journey needs of you, helping you to always have that center point, that point of connection and relationship and support between you and the earth. Helping you to absolve yourself or resolve any harmful relationship patterns that you have engaged in. Just resolving any any harm that you've done to yourself or to the earth through this process. Just tapping a little bit. Integrating this through your auditory abilities. Channeling in a complete cleansing of all the chakra points in order to open up the flow down to the root and into the earth star. And I'm gonna smooth out around the aura. I know this is going a little bit long, but we're doing a complete energy session today. So thank you for being with me through this. And the archangels, thank you as well. So this is an ammonite piece and I'm just using this because I want you to have some grace coded into this energy. Grace with yourself over limitations that you may feel that you have based on those free will choices related to the circumstances that you naturally inherit or have. And the customs and traditions that sometimes we feel we may, we must honor. Or ones that we wanna build as well. Because I'm feeling like there are some limiting beliefs that many of you are carrying related to Or ones that we wanna build as well, cause I'm feeling like there are some limiting beliefs that many of you are carrying related to um particularly like economic things. Um and this has to do with like I mean, I've been guilty of this too, is just being in the modern world, sometimes we have certain conveniences that aren't necessarily eco-friendly. Um or they don't support. If we had more knowledge or more awareness, we may not have like bought into these practices that are given to us. So just allowing you to like cultivate grace again and forgiveness and patience with yourself as you find different avenues um related to this. And also knowing that sometimes there are moments where, you know, we have to accept that we are not going to be in perfect balance. Um but allowing ourselves to know that we can compensate for those things by taking extra steps to honor the earth. Honor our relationship with um the spiritual guides that are around us that do assist us with our relationship to matter as well. Because we are in the third dimension, we have a special relationship with material. And those spiritual guides want us to really like perfect that um that connection. That's I think why, why the archangels are um using this as a transition point between Archangel Michael, being able to do the, the work on you and then bringing in Archangel Gabriel to close it. So. Um Archangel Gabriel is wanting me to bring in another crystal energy, but connecting it to this ammonite. Um this is a very water-based energy, so not surprised with that lunar influence. Um but this is some Amazonite. Just for me, this is um very much connected to the throat chakra. Um but also to the third eye and the heart, just that whole, this whole segment um of self-expression, but it also is a very peace-inducing um stone or mi- mineral material. Um and combined with the ammonite energy, this is going to release any worries, doubts or anxieties that you may have. Connected to believing in your own abilities, believing in the spiritual energies and being able to sense and perceive these deeper realms of reality, because I feel like this is a significant block for many of you who are in contact with this energy, just helping you to release any of those doubts, those human-based constructs that make you question um or feel crazy or out there. So we're just going to release those um limiting connections to collective constructs that may have served humanity in terms of giving us lessons. But are no longer useful as we shift and heal our collective energies. So helping you to really um discern as you enter those spiritual realms as well, cause it's not just the belief in the subtle energies, it's also being able to navigate very complicated energies that um exist on different spectrums than we're used to here in um this reality. And if we are using our human mind solely to enter these, we can sometimes get really confused. Um because we tend to wanna see things as good or bad, and that's not always how things are. So Archangel um Gabriel is really good at this, because that, if we think about how the moon operates and the symbolism of the moon. The moon goes through its phases and it understands subtlety. Especially in dark environments, where we can't always rely on our seeing. Also reflects back to us um the, the light of the sun. So there's this um idea of being able to match energies when we're in contact with them and knowing that if we're matching an energy and we're not feeling good from that energy, or please excuse, you know, good and bad, I don't really have the language. But if we're not feeling a harmonious energy within ourselves, knowing that that's not necessarily a good connection or relationship for us to make, even with a spirit or a deity. So hopefully that brought in some kind of peace or restful energy for you at this time. I'm feeling like Archangel Gabriel is not wanting me to do too much, too much. Um I am feeling like I need to do some energy plucking back here. And Archangel Gabriel is wanting me to also burn some cedar that I collected again, you know, honoring that relationship that I have with this sacred space where I collected it. And ethically sourced that plant material. So just plucking any remnants out of your energetic field. A lot of these I'm feeling are more like judgments or perceived judgments associated with exercising your spiritual gifts, psychic abilities. For some of you, this is just shame overall, so. You're just consciously releasing that experience of feeling ashamed of oneself. Especially pulling and plucking from the throat area this time. Just giving, as I'm, you know, sending this energy away, I'm giving it to the archangels to transmute as well as um the earth, cause the earth is great. We think about composting. Really good at taking this energy and turning into something new. Cause shame energy exists for a reason. Just isn't serving you at this time. Cause the earth accepts and acknowledges that we need this um anchoring of spiritual energy that is going to help um relieve the earth of carrying the burden of this like um karmic cycle that's been going on, so. Gonna um light this cedar. And I'm just gonna pass this through your aura. Adding in a layer of psychic protection, adding in um an opening to these energetic channels, these consciousness pathways that can reveal to you how to connect more deeply and intuitively with your spirit guides. With these guides who may help you develop your gifts, develop your own healing capacities. Um but I'm just gonna let this burn right here. Cedar is a very protective herb. Um I feel like it creates a really nice um almost like balm of a barrier when we burn it. Um and burn it with that sacred intention to not allow anything that's below a certain um frequency or with a certain intention in mind from entering or passing through. But it is a flexible enough um energy that it will invite in more loving energy and hold that within the protective space. Okay. So I'm gonna try and Okay. Um so I'm gonna bring in a message from Archangel Gabriel to close this. And again, emphasizing this earth-based connection that's really been brought as a thread and unexpected theme through this, but I'm not surprised because my own um spiritual gifts are very much connected to protecting and honoring our relationships and re-evoking our ancestral relationships to the earth. But we have here the card uh thirty-six of abundance. Three and six um do reduce down to a nine. And nines do connect us to our ancestry. Um and so I think Archangel Gabriel is wanting us to remember that the plants, that our ecosystems are a part of our physical biology, that they do connect us to um our data and our DNA. And we can shift and alter our DNA based on the energetic materials that we bring. Not only through our physical body, but in our environment as well. We react and respond and have extrasensory relationships with these things. And so abundance is showing that there's so much at your um disposal if you choose to listen. Um and receive the energy that is being offered all around you. Says, I am grateful for the abundance nature and the universe provide in my life. And this person's holding a huge vat of water. So for a lot of you, I would suggest following this energy session if you are not using it to go to sleep. Um go and do some kind of cleansing using water. This can be, you know, taking just a regular shower and washing your physical body. Um it can also be, you know, drinking water and putting intention into the water, but doing something related to the water. Archangel Gabriel is really just wanting to bring this through um at this time to show you that you can um ask for some kind of special guidance through um programming the water to be of assistance to you at this time. So that is all I am getting for you. I wanna close this session um with this beautiful Himalayan pink salt candle holder. I'm gonna use it kind of as a big crystal, big mineral. And just bring through this energy of pure love, helping you to feel warm and safe and loved. As you move forward, I wanna thank you so, so, so much for joining me and being a part of this beautiful session today. Um I'm just so grateful and honored that I get to live in a time where I can connect with people over um developing these spiritual gifts and that we can um change the collective consciousness and bring forward such a beautiful um new expression and experience of spirituality. Um and that we can create this across cultural and national boundaries and things like that, so. I'm just so grateful and sending you so much love and so much thanks. I'm thanking your guides, my guides, Archangel Michael, Archangel Gabriel, for facilitating and assisting and helping to channel through beautiful and lovely messages today. So I will see you soon, my friend. Bye.